We'll call this meeting. We'll call this meeting to order, this, uh, commission meeting to order February first, twenty twenty-three. And, uh, Mayor Pride War, would you, uh, lead us in pledge? The Fed Canic Commission will, uh, now meet as a board of equalization and review. Uh, is there any appointments? Is there anybody here to, uh, wish to speak to the Board of Equalization for assessment on property? None? Motion to recess this Board of Equalization and Review and convene nine o'clock, um, February seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, violation? Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? Uh, sorry about that. Oh, okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the real estate exonerations presented this morning.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to combine. Combine, is it combine, divide, or segregate?
That was a combo, yeah.
Uh, presented for us for, uh, terror presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Y'all got me all, y'all throw papers at me left and right here. Oh my gosh.
Let him, let him catch up on these, he's got kind of a sign here.
All right.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the, uh, correction for a, for Tony Properties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vouchers and invoices, either commissioners have questions about it?
Well, I just, a statement about it, um, we have a, an invoice in there for a, a legal bill for special prosecutor that, um, where the, a prior commission agreed to pay a flat fee and that flat fee was not represented in the minutes for some reason of the meeting, um, that at least one commissioner remembers happening, um, there've been a lot of, there's been a lot of documentation, um, in the court file about, um, research on flat fees, that's the thing, and I believe, uh, given, uh, the attorney asserted the work was done and there was, at least a verbal agreement with the commission that the commission should honor that agreement. There is a letter or a, what, what is it, an order or a motion, a resolution, that's what she drafted. Okay, so Anthony drafted resolution, I haven't read it yet, but, um, right in front of me, uh, that we're gonna file with the court, just so the court understands our reasoning on, um, paying the invoice, that's it, that's the only thing I had in there, yeah.
My motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Estate settlements?
There's also a request to appoint Brian Parsons. As.
That'd be two separate motions, correct?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the estate settlements.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do, uh, I make a motion to approve, uh, Brian Parsons as a special fusion, fusion fiduciary commission, uh, for Nate, for the estate of Nancy Lee Johnson.
Why are we doing? Does everybody have a conflict or something?
Yeah, pretty much, we're really helping Brian, but we haven't named about it with you yet.
Okay.
It's been on four years, it's been through the circuit once, now that February.
Oh, so Larry resigned? The fiduciary, I didn't know.
Well, he resigned because he can't do it because he's currently representing, uh, uh, someone else in a case against one of the people involved.
Okay, so he, okay, so that just in, the way this is worded, I thought he resigned as fiduciary commissioner.
I think it was just a co- conflict.
Yeah. Okay, that's what it looks like now.
There's two process, this one. We're running out of time, did we vote?
I, I voted, you have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Did you see these minutes? The ones that I was.
January fourth, yeah.
Like those are with your edits.
Ruth, do you want to, uh, exhibit a?
So the first one is a request from Zen to answer the Federal County Board of, they want to use to the town, right, and Anthony has, an agreement. Wow. It's our.
Oh, did it probably written?
Yeah. Well, the ones from the fourth one.
We'll wait till after, if you want to. Yeah, I'm sorry, Ruth.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Anthony.
This is an agreement between the, the town of Fayetteville and, uh, our county clerk, the county commission to use two of the voting machines, um, that Bay County has since during their municipal election. Um, I believe Mr. Harris, their attorney, drafted this agreement. Um, I mean, it addresses my concern, basically, there's provisions that, upon assuming, uh, custody of the voting machines, the town, take appropriate steps to keep the voting machines secure while in that possession.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, and Michelle, I don't know if you're able to get the answers to these questions or not, but their election is going to run from, six-thirty in the morning till seven-thirty at night. Then they need to do tallies. Will they need to get into the memorial building in order to run reports?
Um, I went over and tested that yesterday, but, there's a way to run the, the voting results from the D S two hundred machine itself, um, and probably what I'll suggest that they, they can set the media up to do that automatic performance, they don't even have to, when they close the fold and the machine, it'll automatically print that results.
Okay. So, since Fayetteville's doing this, have, has any other municipalities reached out to you?
Not as of yet.
Okay. And if we do, Anthony, can we use the same type of, of agreement with them?
Certainly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No question?
The big issue that I see in this is just sure that while they're investigating, change or that's secure.
Well, we should at, at least provide us their, what they're planning to do to secure the machines, that we have that as a matter of record.
That's not in the, that's, that's not in the contract.
Well, we can, we can say provided, they provide us that, all probably, and go ahead and. Get through, I mean, it has to be consistent with whatever your, policy is.
Yeah. I work on, 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 what, some of the, the, those ins and outs, and we already, I already discussed, uh, with Vance about, uh, training spur and, and there's a lot of other on, on the sheets.
Um, I may, we, I mean.
They've changed.
With that, yeah, with, under the condition that, you know, they secure the machines according to the policy of the county clerk.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want to approve the match?
Yeah, these, and then that student reservation.
You want to approve them?
I've already read them.
Oh, you seen them, John?
We have minutes from the January first, uh, meeting, and I move that we approve those.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh yes, I've already read that, okay.
And then, I've just read the resolution, uh, Anthony wrote for us to file with the court with regard to payment of that, those attorney's fees, um, I move that we approve the resolution as written.
Sure, sure. All in favor?
Aye.
And let's get one, try to get one more.
So this one right here is pretty easy, but number three, it's the administration, agreement with Region Four for cost incurred as a result of the August point of flooding, this is something required by FEMA, for them to work with the county, to recover some of those costs, and Anthony reviewed it and changed one word.
Okay.
My motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we need to authorize Ruth to just stamp at the bottom of this, just, this resolution.
That'd be fun.
It's your five, send it to your line, it's just Tom's signature on that one.
Yeah, Tom, you just. You want me to take care of the? The, uh, number two, real quick, too?
If you want.
Well, me and, uh, Rob and the sheriff has talked about a shooting range, or they've talked about a shooting range. Are we supposed to have some information together to put a R F P out? We're gonna go ahead and still put the R F P out for development of a shooting range, and then on, and we will have the specs done by February thirteenth, uh, to present, to put an ad out, and then on that, February thirteenth, we will have a timeline, a scheduled timeline for the ads, pre-bid, the mandatory pre-bid meeting, uh, opening the bids. So I make a motion to approve, uh, an R F P for a shooting range.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It is, uh, nine fifteen, and we have discussion in New Haven, P S D. And, uh, Leslie Thader, do you want to? Come up and?
Maybe it would be better if you wanted to hear some of the citizens' comments first, and then whether they're aggressive.
How many people here wants to talk about, how many citizens have something to say? Okay, so you're just one person so far, is that it?
Yeah, it seems to be.
Okay, you want to come up? I just needed to notice how much time we needed to give everybody, because we only got thirty minutes on this.
Yeah, just come over here to the microphone, Cindy, and just talk directly into it. You can slide it over.
Yes, ma'am.
Morning.
Cindy, Cindy, for the record, can you go ahead and say your name and?
Social shoots.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just listening to what Amy said. Yeah.
I was making sure she said it.
Well, Amy said, can you please have her?
Charles, go ahead.
My name is Cindy Ginn. I'm here today to request on behalf of the residents of Sunday Road, and outlining the health areas, finding to complete the water lines in our area. We were informed by Senator Mason's office and have seen news releases that there should be infrastructure funding available. For over thirty years, we as a community have been trying unsuccessfully, to secure water for our area. We filled out forms requesting water within that thirty years and have not seen anyone from the P S D citizens. We were informed that because some people didn't want the water thirty years ago, because there wasn't enough residents on our road, we would not give water. The current data that the New Haven P S D is using is outdated. People have died, homes have been sold, new residents have moved in, new homes built, and most residents do want water, but we don't have water. Our area is growing. We are seeing more and more people traveling our roads, we have the best wrapping, hiking, camping, biking, rock climbing, and we, the residents, we call water. We were told to go to the water meetings and voice our concerns, we have. We attended numerous New Haven water meetings, the Penn County Commission meetings, seeing commissions come and go. Been told we are next on the list, only to have our other areas pass us by, and we can't understand why. We're here today to get answers. We had our water test by the health departments, along with Duke University and Williams-Jessel University, which they found contaminants in our water systems. Water is a basic and human necessity for survival. We have survived by buying bottled water and hauling iron water. We have contacted our governor, federal and state representatives, and still no water for thirty years, just think about that. We have been trying and trying to get someone's attention to get water, still no success. Not having water has resulted in added expenses for the residents of our area. For a family of five on an average, it takes five loads of water a week. This means traveling twenty to thirty miles, that's a round trip to the Pickly Wiggly, and all types of weather such as today, stood roads, as day or night, and meeting racking buses on a one-lane road, which is the next waiting to happen. And then sometimes when you get to the water filling station, it's out of service for its person. The expense of gas, wear, and tear of our vehicles, purchasing bottled water by the cases and by the gallon, traveling to laundromats to wash clothes due to the iron in our water. Some homes in our area cannot get fire insurance due to no hydrants or the distance from local fire departments. We have requested that American Water consider putting water filling stations at the end of our lives. No response. We would like to invite you, the members of the New Haven P S D, for a ride along, so you can see what we endure by hauling water. We have seen some progress though, but it's limited. Water lines have been installed from the beginning of Saturday Road, so Fortu Cut Off, and went down Fortu, up two to three miles. At that time, the residents of Ramsey were full and assured, the water line was coming to Ramsey too, but for some unforeseen reason, the line were diverted solely down Fortu. Please understand, we are thrilled and happy that they got their water. Need water. We just don't understand why the promises are being made, but they are broken, and how the P S D makes its decision on who gets water and who doesn't, there's no consistency. Also, water has been installed from the beginning of Sunday Road to the end of Stringtown Road. It was a connector of Stringtown Road to Sunday Road. There are two pending contracts, Project Eighteen, this projected to bring water via Sunday Road, starting at the connector of Sunday Road, to the Confluence, Elliott Cut Off Road, and to the top of Dogwood Ridge. We are not sure how the water is going to get to the Confluence without going down Patterson Ferry Road. We are not sure of a projected start date, since this contract has been canceled in the past and reissued with totally new different areas. Project Nineteen contains Crane, Kane Branch Extension, which is in Valley District, Ramsey, Culver Road, Arrowood Creek Road, Dotson Ridge, Lower Dotson Ridge, and Whistery Pond, which is a campground on Millroy Grace Road. The following areas are still waiting for contracts or projects. That is Wind Road, Richmond Chapel Road, which the P S D is calling White Road, which it is not, Woods Ferry Road, Lucas Road, and the remainder of Fortu Road, which our records or your records state has been completed, but it's not. Here, we are twenty twenty-three, still no water. We are at our wit's end, we have been patient. You can see that we have done everything in our control to get water, only to be pulled continuously. You are on the list. We have been to meeting after meeting, P S D and county commission submitted petitions, and talked with our government representatives to no avail. So here we are again, standing before you, asking that you earmark infrastructure funds to complete the water project in our area. Hopefully you will see that this area needs the funds for clean water, and has tried and tried, repeatedly, to get someone's attention to get water, only to be passed by, and passed back and forth between state and county agencies. In order for us to understand the process, we have several questions that we would like answered. However, due to time constraints, potential research, and the fact that this is your budget meeting, we are submitting these questions to you in writing, and would like a written response from you at least ten days before March twenty-second, twenty twenty-third. This would allow time for you to review and respond, as well as, give us time to decide our next step in this process. And I have these to get to you. Mr. Loises?
Is, is your letter in here also?
Yes.
Good.
Mister Hayes. In closing, the first water meeting I attended was held at Midland Trail High School, and that was in the late seventies, early eighties. I attended with my neighbor, Mr. Hessler. There were representatives from Torres Strait. They told us their plans to bring water from Ansead, and that it wouldn't take long before Hiko would have clean water. We were getting forms to sign to get this discount on the promised waters, because we were the first people to fight for clean water in our area. After the meeting, Mr. Hessler said to me, the sad part of all of this is I will be dead and gone before Hiko sees clean water in our area. Mr. Hessler died in nineteen eighty-seven, no clean water. He was correctly predicting his death before getting water, that I would never believe, to be fighting, waiting, or still hauling water after thirty years. The same things happened on Sunday Road, Saturday. My mother and aunt, they tried to fight to get water, starting in the nineties, by securing sound water horns from those wanting water, attending and holding meetings with families in the area. My mother and aunt both passed away without clean water. I started this quest shortly after high school. I'm at the same age as my mother was when she started this quest. We need to stop this cycle of mother, daughter, and now potentially granddaughters asking for clean water, by funding the completion of the water lines in our area. I would like to say, I wanna, there's one person I want to personally thank is Beverly Walker, which is my neighbor. Beverly is a breast cancer survivor. She has walked and worked for our area in Ramsey for years to get water. She is the person that went door to door with these universities and the health departments, collecting samples and signatures. She's no stranger to the timeless hard work it pays. Thank Beverly, I thank you for all your work that you've done for our community. It takes a village to raise a child, and it takes a village to pull together to get a job well done. This is our village behind me here. We're here standing together, arm in arm. We want clean water. We want it to all the residents in and around our area. I thank you again, and the residents of Sunday Road, Sandy Road, and outline areas, appreciate your time, your consideration of funding this water project, and look forward to your response to our question.
Thank you, I like the letter.
I'm glad we got a copy too.
Absolutely. I was wanting, I was wanting a copy of it to send, to send back maybe. Leslie, do you want to talk about this, or you want us, okay. I think we're gonna ask P S D to talk after.
Sure, I'm gonna turn my back to you guys.
That's fine, we need you to, we need you to speak into the microphone, so that everybody can hear you.
Turn, yeah, turn around.
Questions, I can probably address some of those, it won't be written, but since we can talk about them a little bit. Our, our chair question, yeah, business questions. So my name is Bradley Taylor, and I'm with Region Four Learning Development. Region Four serves as a project administrator for New Haven P S D, and for many years, even pre-dating our kind of region for, uh, Region Four, administer water and wastewater project for New Haven P S D. So, I want to talk a little bit about contract aid that, um, and I'm probably gonna say a lot of things that you already said, but this, uh, project is to extend water service to approximately sixty-seven new customers in the Sunday Road Confluence and Elliott Cut Off Road areas, as well as installation of connectors to Stringtown Road and Pickly. The project has applied for and received its certificate of convenience and necessity from the West Virginia Public Service District, and we expect this project will be out for bid in April of twenty twenty-four. Uh, the other project.
Hey Leslie, can you explain more to them about what that means timeline-wise, as far as it getting started and?
So if a project goes out for bid in April, so there, it, it takes thirty days to get here. So we advertise it in the newspaper, we take bids from qualified contractors, and the project engineers here, David, please screen me out if I mess up the process.
Be great.
Um, so, so I'm just gonna pick April fifteenth. So if the project goes out for bid in April fifteenth, by May fifteenth will be a we bid roughly. Um, once those bids are open, if they are within the projected budget, then we will proceed to what's called a closing, so it's like the closing on half six. Um, and then those, those, those bids will have a ninety-day deadline, but within that ninety days, we will go to closing, and then, uh, notes can proceed to be issued to the contractor, and then the contractor will order their materials and get started with the project. So, if the bids are good and we close in, let's say August, you're probably not gonna see any activity until November.
Depends on.
It depends on materials, materials are hard to get right now, they're getting easier, but we're still suffering from some of the effects of the pandemic. So that project is, has a projected construction time of, twelve months, so, um, you know, this project could be complete by the end of twenty twenty-four. The other project is, uh, what we refer to as Contract Nineteen, and it proposes to extend water service to approximately seventy-five new customers in the Ramsey, Culver, Kane Branch, South Miller Ridge, Arrowood, Dotson Ridge, and Lower Dotson Ridge areas. The project attorney is currently working on obtaining easements, there are twenty-five easements needed, and twenty-five, twenty-one of these have been obtained to date, There are twenty-five easements needed, and twenty-five, twenty-one of these have been obtained to date. And there's also a property for a pressure reducing station. Property owner has been identified and is working with the attorney to negotiate a, a purchase price. So we anticipate this project will file an application for a certificate of convenience and necessity with the West Virginia Public Service Commission in April twenty twenty-three. So just a note on the Public Service Commission. You file for your certificate of convenience and necessity by statute, they have a hundred and eighty days to respond. So we already consider that time in there. So six months, we want it to be sooner, but it's at their discretion how quickly, um, get that taken here.
Can we do anything to hurry that along? And if anything that we can, as a commission?
You can write a letter and we can provide it to them, but that there's no guarantee that that's gonna beat them up.
I would like to do.
But I'm about to get to another interesting point that may help speed up.
And even send this letter.
So both of these projects are going to result in a surcharge on the current rate. So you'll have West Virginia American Water regular rates. Plus, because of the land component of both of these projects, there will be a surcharge of roughly twenty dollars on top of West Virginia American Water rates. So because the combined air charge is going to result in customers' minimum monthly bills being in excess of eighty dollars a month. The PSD Board asked Region Four Planning and Development Council to file applications for economic enhancement grant funds from the West Virginia Water Development Board. These funds just recently became available. We have done so. We have submitted those applications, and they should be reviewed by the Water Development Authority in mid-February. If the applications are successful, those economic enhancement grant funds will be used to reduce the amount of surcharge. Um, so what you were saying about the Public Service Commission. Projects that have economic enhancement grant fund money in the, in a little more priority at the Public Service Commission because those funds have deadlines which they have to. So, um. These, so the projects are moving. The Contract Aging Project, you know, we expect to be out for bid this year. Contract Nineteen will be, um, most likely next year. Uh, let's see, let's see if I can answer some of your questions.
Does eighteen and nineteen cover everybody that's, what are the areas they're talking about in here? I, I needed to have a map up here, to be honest with you.
No, it doesn't.
I'd rather have a map.
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't.
Um, so I, I will also address the, and I'm gonna give the name wrong because I only know the certain things. White Road, Old Wind Road, and Lucas Road. The County Commission put forty thousand dollars each into those projects for preliminary engineering. That has been done, and those applications have been submitted to the West Virginia Infrastructure and Jobs Development Council, which is the state clearinghouse for all infrastructure projects. Let's see, maybe most of these you made. At the end, unfortunately. Um, I will address the Kane Branch. Kane Branch is still in New Haven's area. And that's why Kane Branch is included on this project. They have about twelve to fourteen residents down there who have requested water as well. They are included on the contract nineteen project. How are we, they're so far away from that. They are still in New Haven's district.
Uh, originally on, um, not the eighteen, well, it's removed, removed.
Uh, unfortunately, I'm not able to answer that for you. I, I can speak with current facts. I cannot speak for the past. Mr. Hayes is here, and can he make a?
And if we remove, we don't bother nineteen. Ramsey was originally supposed to get water when the water finned up Saturday rose. But the area wanted the survey for signed user agreements. Um, fifty percent of the people with the signed user agreement for the area.
That's false. Yeah.
Well.
I mean.
I. I had the question posed to me several years after it materialized, and then I had the original user agreements. Uh. Research dug up and had it checked, even looked at it myself, and sure enough. Only fifty percent of the people at that time signed a user agreement. Since then, uh, when we started revisiting the Ramsey area. I took those names of those people who had, uh, originally decided to sign up. I went to all those people and got nearly all of them to sign up, so that's where we're at now. And I don't know why, various reasons, some people just adamant about not participating. And but anyway, got the user agreements, and so that's when we got back on track and getting Ramsey.
Well, in the beginning, on the new, on the old Project Eighteen, there were four people that did not sign for water. That's not fifty percent of our community.
We don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, 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 we were more people than any people signing us. Uh, one of the questions on here is explaining project number and being that's reflected on the West Virginia Infrastructure and Jobs Development Council. How can project, I don't know if you have a sign, a sign number before Project Eighteen? That's because, that's the way I entered. I had a project in front of me. I entered it into the system. It just so happened that it was Project Nineteen. The very next project was Project Eighteen. So it's, the, the numbering sequence doesn't affect these projects at all. That was a clarity or, no, it's not a clarity or, it's just the way they were entered. And because, well, Project Eighteen is seventeen sixty-one in the infrastructure system. Project Nineteen is seventeen sixty. I had the information for Project Nineteen in front of me. I entered it, and then I moved on to the next one. It doesn't affect their priority at all. That's just the number for which we were with funding agents. It doesn't have any effect whatsoever on drivers. I have projects, I actually have a project right now in, in another county, two hundred and twenty-fourteen, that's the. So, um, when the PSD receives grants, are these grants for specific areas? Yes, we apply for funding based on a specific area, not just PSD-Y. So we present a project to the West Virginia Infrastructure and Jobs Development Council and tell them what we have. They do a funding review and a technical review. And then they recommend that project for funding if it's technically these. So, um. The grants are for specific areas.
Amen. I got, I got. Two thousand and eighteen, I contacted the governor's office, made sure that the funds were there. And within, uh, a legal, went through the legal mumbo to, to get everything approved. But the last meeting of those, it was stated that the funds were used for another, another emergency reason. So my question was, is that be there?
Possible, because these, these projects, once they're funded, and, and I can tell you that New Haven PSD for, we'll, we'll go with Contract Eighteen. They receive a principal forgiveness design loan for the drinking water treatment revolving fund. So we have used that to further that project along where it is now. We have extended those funds and extended those funds a year ago. There is an invoice for every penny that was spent for that. The PSD Board approves them. The funding agents who have to approve them, they can't be used for another purpose other than what is stated in the funding application.
The thing I'm getting at is if the money was there and the funding was there, so why hasn't it stopped and completed?
It's like closing on house. So you know you're gonna close on a house, and you're working with the bank, and you have this loan. But you can't move into that house until you actually close on that run, and the seller gets their money. It's the same with the project. You have to go through all the steps. It is, but here's the next one thing. It does, the pandemic slowed it down a lot. We were really on track to get this done before the, even during the pandemic. We were, Project Eighteen, in the beginning, the very first Project Eighteen, was approved, had the money. They terminated it. I can't speak for that. And, and the worst thing we can do, we can talk about the past. But the best thing we can do is look forward on how we're gonna better, but that didn't work. There was no money. So you used examples recently. So when you hear that a project is done. It doesn't break structures. Shows up, PSD ends up somewhere. That's not the way that it works at all. We know that. And so, well, I had somebody last week, I'm talking to somebody else on another project, so maybe another failure. So I've been trying to tell them, we've been in this for thirty, uh, so the money, until we get bid for the project. There's no money there to spend. You have to go through all the steps. You have to receive your West Virginia. Uh, PSD's or people you can use, you have to have all your easements. You have to have all your property ownership. Your permits, uh, you, uh, New Haven PSD has an operating, they made this agreement with West Virginia America. That has to be worked out between their attorneys. I know that there was some lag time in that bid here, some wording that can be changed and addressed. Um, so I know these are answers that you want from here, but I'm trying to tell you that we are, we are getting there. Um, the, the request from the Public Service Commission, and, and I'm sorry you.
Two, three years and.
Yeah.
You have to have the work together, just stand for, I'm staying six years. I mean, that's a long time, COVID or not.
I mean, oh, you, Region Four has all this time. I encourage you to come home out to you. Spend, spend the day, go through projects and, and talk about it. It's, it's difficult to see that. It, it's difficult to understand what these projects go through to get to where they are. And when you want water, it's tough. The community that I grew up in didn't have water on my lawn until about six years. And I was thrilled. There were people that lived there that knew me when I was a little girl, that said, we'll never get water. A couple of them passed. One of them didn't. We actually made it to see them get water. Um, so to me, although I don't have any family here anymore. Um, it was a, it was a pleasure for me to be able to see this community get water. Yeah. Um, so I understand your frustrations, and I, I hope you all understand that, and I believe the PSD does, and our whole project team. Um. So the water funds for these projects. I can tell you exactly where the funds are gonna come. So on Contract Eighteen, the, um. Bureau of Public Health through the drinking water treatment revolving fund is assisting with the funding on this, on these projects.
Well, she's looking for that, Kate. And, uh, we funded, we done, we funded engineering for just everything um, around the, the areas they were talking about. Is that correct?
When they're in the fourth, yeah.
Yeah.
Those three you mentioned, and those that are essentially water.
Yeah. So I was saying the commission, the commission stepped up and we funded the four million or a little over two hundred thousand dollars to, to try to get engineering work for water on the areas you're talking about.
And hopefully you are gonna approve of all of that.
This commission done it for, we done it four or six months ago, something like that?
Over an hour and a half, I think, last year, yeah.
Okay, okay. So we have stepped up and tried to do anything we can to, to help.
The significance of that is in part that whenever our federal representatives and state representatives come to us and they wanna know, sometimes they do. They wanna know if we have any pre-engineered projects that are ready to go. Something that's already been studied. We wanna make sure we have a lot of arrows in that quiver for, you know, when they come and ask that question. We have put in infrastructure reports to the feds multiple times, and they're listening to us now. Um, Anstead is getting some help, um, from a, from a congressional earmark to upgrade its water system, which is then gonna help us expand from Anstead. We've requested over and over to be able to expand up, all the way up Route sixty to Hiko to get that started, and all the way through Chestnutburg Road.
Saying that, saying, um, by him, he said, he's an eighty. It was supposed to came from Anstead to Hiko. You look how long that's been, and now you're gonna reintroduce that and bring it back out. And therefore you get ahead of our, I mean, I'm telling everybody to, to find business.
Well, here's the thing though, when.
We, we weren't opening, we weren't getting water. We were told, you are on the list, you're getting water. And they kept it a secret when they went down Porchew Road and set one to the straight, the main road, where it would have connected the same road, and being go out to the out, outer, you know, to branch out. And they kept that a secret, and we were told different things. And now we're thirty years later, and we're still here, and y'all don't wanna talk about the past, but this is relevant. It's a memory. Because it was approved then, it's been approved now. Are they approved? Are they gonna get in here? I'm just gonna get that a rest grade, but they all peppered. Yeah, said we're gonna get put right back in the back. So like, the, the Contract Aging has received its certificate of convenience and necessity from the West Virginia Public Service Commission. Um, so the funding for that project, New Haven PSD is using some residual uh, uh, their residual contribution from previous projects, these money would have come from the public agency from West Virginia American Water. They also have the West Virginia American Water contribution to the project. And, uh, the drinking water treatment revolving fund, the Bureau that itself is providing some lending grant. And then as we did apply for some West Virginia uh, Water Development Authority Economic Enhancement Grant Fund dollars towards us. We don't have a disposition on that application yet for the Economic Enhancement Grant Fund that can be heard mid-February. But if that application is not successful, then we will proceed with the project with the drinking water treatment revolving fund law. So that there are monies that are in place for this, uh, for the project to move forward. And give me just a second, and I'll get your project. And you're talking about Ramsey? I'm talking about Contract Eighteen with, with we, we're in my conflict. Okay, so now we're here to Nineteen, and we'll talk about what's.
Ask a question. Um, you mentioned that when the project goes out for bid. If the bids come back within budget. Someone will be selected. If no one comes in within the budget.
Then we seek additional funds. Then we go back to all of the agencies that are assisting us with funding this project, and we ask them on it.
Okay, thank you.
So the Contract Nineteen project, which is the Ramsey, Oliver, um, Kane Branch, Arrowood. That has, uh, the County Commission did make, um. A contribution to that project. The, um, district just last year received a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Section Three Forty grant for that project. New Haven PSD put money in that project. We are also getting, uh, West Virginia American Water contribution. Uh, the drinking water treatment revolving fund, the Bureau of Public Health is providing loan and principal forgiveness. Principal forgiveness is the same thing as brand, basically. And then we're also getting, uh, an, uh, grant from the West Virginia Infrastructure and Jobs Development Council. And we have applied for the West Virginia Water Development Authority Economic Enhancement Grant Funds for the that economic enhancement grant fund application should be heard in the middle of February. So when those, those funds don't come into a bank. What we do is once those projects, once we have a project that is moving forward, it's been to construction. Uh, or it's been out for bids, a construction contract is underway. Those individuals, the engineer, the accountant, the contractor, they all submit those, their invoices to region board. We review them, make sure there's no mathematical errors. We put them together in what's, what we call a roll down. We present them to the Public Service District for review. Once they review them and approve them. We send them to the funding agency, and the funding agency sends the money to the project account based on the awards that are received. Checks are then written to the vendors. So the project account is basically a tax burden. We request the funds for the invoices we have. The money comes in, the checks are written, the money's gone. And it's on an invoice by invoice basis. So, um. And so you ask, um. How, how are funds distributed as to whom, so in the design loan phase, accounting, legal, engineering, administration. Any of those invoices that have come through, we present them to the PSD Board for review approval. Then we've submitted them to the funding agency, who then issue payment into the project account, and then checks were written to the vendors.
Is there any place to ask for more money to put in your bank? Who else could we go to for more money?
Well, right now we have a project. We, we packed into all the funding sources that we possibly could to get money for these moments. We wanted to try to keep it as, the, as cost, the cost as reasonable as possible. Because like I mentioned, once these two. Because like I mentioned, once these two projects are finished, there's going to be about a twenty dollar surcharge on. So we, we, uh, up to the grand, take care of that. We already have great money in this, but there is a loan. The, the surcharge will be the loan rights.
Is there a rapid, but what, what are you?
Yes. So, um, contract nineteen is estimated project cost and this is construction and all of the soft costs. Soft costing, engineering, accounting, legal, um, is seven million, forty-eight thousand and thirteen dollars. And then the other one. The contract eighteen project is four million, six hundred, one thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Could you show, tell them where to go and look at all this?
That they would need to come to the office to look at this. So our office is located at eight eighty-five Rock Street in Sunbelt. We're in Suite one hundred. You can come over there. Reinform maintains all the project files. We can fill through the duration of the project. Once the project's complete, then they go to the P S D. Who maintains the records for several years. I would encourage you, if you want to kind of look at those. Uh, I can give you my card. If you'll call me ahead of time, there are tons. I'm out of the office like I am now. So if you'll call me, we can schedule a time where you can come and look at those. Uh, records anytime. I also have them, um. Scored electronically as well. But if it's a sale of the electronic versions would result in multiple emails.
When did you say the ten project nineteen would start?
We hope for the contract eighteen to be up for bid in about April. Do you agree that? I think Al Tizer is a project engineer here and he, he could be able to answer some questions that I was gonna make.
We, we have a question. So we have a question online, um, from Jordan Manning. He's still, um. And, and I'd like to know too, how did the projects get terminated and then reconfigured? How does that happen?
We have terminated contracts, particularly the forwards. Uh, which various contracts I don't know.
Or projects. So project eighteen that used to be project eighteen and.
Customer participation and, and not have that. Uh, sign up. You would have to maybe scrap a project to, to, to my knowledge, the area that. That ever happened, but within the rancher area.
Well, if you get on the infrastructure website, it would used to be posted on there and now it's not. It's not in one of the active things or nothing. It used to be posted right on there as an active bidding and it was no longer on there.
So it wouldn't be, you wouldn't be actively bidding.
Yeah, there's a project and it works and it's no longer on there.
I'll, I'll look at one that's out of the system. So do you have any other questions for me or to tell me today at all time or who's the project engineer?
I might mention something.
Excuse me, Kenny. Can you come up to the microphone here and talk please? So everyone can hear you online.
I understood Miss Taylor say that Ann Stacey was in the process of, uh. Upgrading and I think she used the word water system. And is going to run it up. About sixty as well as around Chestnutburg. Is that what I understood?
That was what we, this, the sewer.
Sewer system.
Hey, I wanted to make sure we clarified that because that's, uh. Is their sewer system is being considered, but we already have water coming up. I just want to make sure everybody understood that.
Okay. And apparently that was Diana King who asked that question. There is another name associated with the sign-ins, so.
Yeah, yeah. And we're, we're.
Can I say one more thing? And I'm not trying to be funny or that much gathered. Now if they have no water to shut off. Would not have returned back on the red project as related. How long would it take to like, I'm taking the college?
I think. No, I, I, I understand how you feel. Sometimes, and I hate to say this, it doesn't sound right, but there has to be funding in order to even, even attempt development. Oh, no, I. No, no, we, we understand this. This commission has fought for across the river. And I think, uh, Mayor Pride War, I'm not going to point him out, but he could probably say, he could probably verify. We have, this commission. Has put money up for engineering. We have fought, we have wrote letters to the governor, letter to, letters to Congress. We have, we have done a lot. At the best we can do. We have pushed and pushed and pushed for water and sewer across the river. We have.
And it's, yeah, it's been, but just to your point, we, you know, the floods we had in August of this year washed out all the sewage. Uh, access from the prison. And because it involved a prison, you know, they, they are getting. Some additional help, but we thought they were. And then we found out that all the residents count to holler, still getting raw sewage. They're only cleaning the water to a certain extent. And the sewage is still coming down the hill from the prison. And getting to them and they're not, they don't consider that an emergency either. You know, I mean, we are having a really hard time getting anybody to. You know, help, you know, restore water to people who've had it. And, and, and keep sewage from running down on the citizens of Hamilton. You know, it's, and, and you heard how many, how many sources of funding had to go into that one project? It's ridiculous. The bureaucracy at the state level in particular is terrible. And our purchasing rules and all the advertising and stuff. And we even tried to, uh, a workaround for, um, one of our areas, Armstrong Creek. That did have water, went without it for lots of weeks and, um. And we had asked that the governor declare a state of emergency for that area to try to get prioritized to be able to get out bids and stuff. We just can't, I mean, we can't win on this. There's just, every project costs so much money. And if we had the money to fund it, believe us, we would fund it all.
Told from Carl's from down there in the capital. That you guys have the money, the infrastructure money.
I'm sure they are.
And they will give you money or if you seek spend that money for raw sewage coming down in people's yards and water. And why did you give, what was it, forty or sixty or eighty thousand dollars to the fire in the morning? We couldn't.
Well, it's, it's millions and millions of dollars for those sorts of things.
And they didn't give us the money to fund that. Believe me, if they gave us the money, we've wrote, we've wrote letters. What money are you talking about?
The infrastructure money. The funding.
The government money.
You have the money to do all of it.
We, we still have about seven point one million of the American Relief Plan money. Um, you heard that even that small project, eighteen and nineteen, what those cost, right? So all of Fayette County is supposed to benefit from this. You know, the remaining, you know, seven point one million, one million has been spent, um. Two hundred and fifty thousand to upgrade the Midland Trail community. I do something. Looking at grant matches where we're required to do a match, trying to put some aside to be able to do that because we can't afford a whole project. But we can try to afford matches. So we've done that. Um, and then we try to put some money into the community, just so the community can see something from it, you know, in, in the form of the community summit. Well, it, it is when we can't fix a sewer, but you can give kids a place to play. I mean, the only problem, I mean.
We keep getting all these promises that they have been giving, taking care of. You're going to get this, you're going to get that. There's nothing. We don't see a thing.
What promises are you talking about though?
Which is like you said, a place for kids to play. People have asked for that for years. We've only asked thirty kids for water. I mean. I, I just don't, I, I just don't know where y'all's thoughts are.
Believe me, we, we have, thi- this commission has spent the money, has put money, just the engineering for the, this. Across the river was two hundred thousand dollars just for the engineering. The projects to, to defund all the water in Fayette County. I don't, I couldn't even fathom what that would cost. So. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're talking about a lot of money. Seven million dollars. If you take and divided that to each community that needed water. It would, still wouldn't happen is what I'm trying to tell you. There's not. We use our funding in conjunction with grant money and grant money is a process. No.
Obligate it. Yeah.
Brown jacket because my water coming out of my pipe.
Oh, I believe you. I mean, we had that in page and can't hate to.
Let, let me give you an idea. Thirty-nine percent of people in Fayette County don't have water. That's sixteen thousand, four hundred and forty-two people. Fifty-two percent have no sewer. That's twenty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-three people. Kenny, how many people are going to be receiving water on both of these contracts? How many homes? Okay, a hundred and fifty. Uh, one fifty times the national average, which is two point five. That's three hundred and seventy-five people. And it's going to be a little, almost twelve million dollars for three hundred and seventy-five people to receive water. Imagine how much it's going to take for the county. And that's where, that's where we're at. What he explained to you, uh, uh, the seven million dollars in one area doesn't help. The sixteen thousand other customers in Fayette County. We're trying to utilize this money. To get everybody watered certain areas with grants and everything. So I mean, that, that's, you know, this is. I mean, that's just, it's tough. I wish we had a hundred million dollars. Believe me, if we had a hundred million dollars, you wouldn't be sitting here looking at us.
And the way the situation is today, every day passes. That number has been read, no longer valid. Right. It's like they're trying to get a movement party. Every day there's a project delay. More likely you're not will have bids coming in under budget.
And believe me, this commission, if these, if these come over budget, the commission, I'm sure we will send letters. And try to request funding from the government, Congress, in, in governor, anybody we can do it. We have done it for the last year. We have pushed and pushed and pushed. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll do it with Ken.
I mean, we're sick of opening that revolving door. We wanted to close it and we haven't closed.
And there was some kind of problems.
Yes. Because they're telling us, we put this in long enough time just there. It's gonna happen and then we'll put back on the bottom again. Your single foundation, it's exactly, it's gonna happen. The money's gonna come through, it's gonna be overbid it and we're gonna be.
Was there any other questions you have for?
For, for project eighteen or, or contract eighteen, how far off Sunday Road is that? When, when it picks up their gem whites? How far out past LA Cattle?
You know, the local knowledge, I, I have a map.
I've got a question, Ken. Why won't they give us a filling states somewhere? There are people out there standing on their porch and they would protect them.
I understand. That filling station that I understand was given because of the. An habit between, uh. The governor's office and West Virginia American Water Company. And funds put that bill station in there, uh, they were, I can't always say. But that, that's where those funds came from at that time. It was just from the governor's office, the grant from the governor's office. Biding it with the West Virginia American Water Company. At that time, they had a.
We need to get back.
For bulk water in Huntington area. So they, they modeled. That all of that and then put that in as a point operated, uh. Uh, water. You know, pickup area. So, um. Never had any success, uh, trying to get another one.
What would that cost, Kenny?
I don't know without having to research.
Can you, can you?
What price? They could do something very simply that. You can just measure the water without having to point.
Can, can you look into that for us soon?
Yeah.
And bring to the commission what, what you find out about the cost or anything?
If you said that surplus with rates are a deal of twenty dollars. To add to your water bill.
That's, I. I mean, that, that's in, the, the commission's not doing it.
And that's roughly twenty dollars in both front end.
Like you said, I pay a hundred dollars a month watching TV. Twenty more dollars because I'm gonna save my pickup. I'm running the brakes to the springs and it will top. Twenty more dollars ain't gonna hurt me. It will, but I, I will spend a hundred dollars to get city water.
Well, those, those economic enhancement grant fund applications are pending at the West Virginia Water Development Authority for review. The middle of next month. They'll meet once a month. So once they review those and make a decision, then we'll. If those applications aren't successful, then we'll move forward with those contracts the way they are. And that's the, like I said, it's about twenty dollars.
Not the works that be more. In twenty dollars, I know people have paid a hundred dollars. And the only way to come through and say, well, you know, your percentage would be thirty dollars instead of twenty, put a couple of things with this contract.
That's what I mean. I mean, we would, you know, we had to make more than that.
That's what I'm saying. I think that all of us here would say we could pay thirty, forty dollars a month if we asked them to get the water.
And I would give much credit to the P S D board. They were concerned with the amount of the certain parts that people would have to pay. So that's why we, we did send those applications to the West Virginia Water Development Authority for some additional grants. While they won't, while they just want to charge out, it will let somebody.
And, and I may, they call it surcharge for, you know, they should do the regular water.
Yeah, I'm saying people would be wanting to pay it to begin with.
Was it, is there any other questions? I mean, what, we only had a half an hour and I'm not trying to push y'all out. Believe me, I understand. That everybody wants water and we've always pushed trying to get everybody water. We want to make sure everybody's heard. We do have a, an agenda we have to keep and we make another date maybe. But does anybody? And, and I understand. I understand completely.
That has been our priority. This commission's priority has been basic infrastructure, getting water, sewage and broadband to people. And that's what we have pushed above everything else. We don't have people coming in here and when they come in here and want. You know, hundreds of thousands of dollars for this pet project or that, we've been saying no. And we've kept that money aside, waiting to see if we could match grants or, or whatever we needed to do. To help get these projects forward or to fund the engineering reports that we've funded. So when people come to us and say, do you have any shovel ready projects? We can say yes. I mean, that's what we've been doing. But keep in mind too, with the numbers that John said, you know, we funded five different project studies. In the New Haven district alone. We've done some stuff in Danies and, and other areas, but there are many other people that did not get that money yet.
And they're just like you.
Right. And so we're, we're dealing with a small amount of money relatively. I mean, seven point one million sounds like a lot of money, but when you're dealing with. A big county with all the problems we have. Um, one thing we haven't been doing is funding municipalities that already have money like, you know, Fayetteville and Oak Hill. You know, they, they have their own budgets and their own funding. You know, they, they have their own budgets and their own funding. We've been looking at people outside of those municipalities and trying to invest that money there. And, and we thought the military was a good investment, because those kids need a place to stay. People managing it are doing a great job of budgeting and, and planning. And so, you know, it was a project that didn't look like it was gonna be waste funds. You know, we think the kids will benefit from it. Now, we're trying to work on, trying to figure out how to transport kids to places like that and around the county. That's a huge issue we have for all of our programming. Don't have a way to get them placed. So, um, just so you know, that's the kind of stuff that we are on and not on, you know, my best friend coming in and wanting money for their project or their community or their business. That's, that's not how.
The road bar makes things, the, we have no water, the sewer, and the property tax will go up every year. We're paying more to live out there, no, no mean, no water. I could see that erase.
All right, we sat, we, me and Ms. Taylor, and I think John's signing his. I'm not trying to push y'all out, believe me. But Marc will be texting and calling me, believe me.
Do you bring to our attention those Eric?
Welcome. Thank y'all.
Find out, because we, we hear about stuff, our shark people without water.
Hey, just one more number.
Call our front office, some of us know, and then we'll, we'll know what's going on.
One more number. It's gonna cost thirty-one thousand. This letter was, that letter, that, may actually take that letter, send the governor, send the governor person, send it other places. That letter meant a lot, so.
Because just recently, we've understood that we're making funding for some bigger projects. We had, they imagine that.
Hey, John. Yeah, let's call Bright, yes.
And then we can free up, that can free up.
Call me back to order. Sorry, I, I'll warn y'all next time. Sorry, I'm cool. That's why I have these, I can't hear. Sorry, we're behind. But Mr. Stump, are you, uh, ready to, uh, give us the info on the, uh, hearing?
I am, yes sir. The, I'm John Stump, Steph O'Donovan Council for the, uh, county commissions, uh, series twenty ten A and B bonds and series twenty twelve bonds, which were issued for purposes of funding the Arrow West Virginia Broadwork Summit in Fayetteville. I have with me this morning Christine Wallace, she's chief operating officer at the summit. Uh, we have the bond issue covered, uh, any advice that you have about the, uh, facility itself. So, it's apt, we're here on February first, because today and tomorrow is Groundhog Day, because this is a little like the movie Groundhog Day. You may recall in late November of twenty twenty, uh, we went through a process where I was here for a couple of meetings. We had a public hearing that was required by the Internal Revenue Service tied to bankruptcy of Boy Scouts. Um, and you all adopted a resolution at that time, authorizing the restructuring of those bonds. And this is as a result of the bankruptcy. As a result of, well, the bankruptcy has not yet resolved. The hope is, is it'll resolve in March or April of this year. Why am I back? Because the public hearing that we held is only good under Internal Revenue Service regulations for one year. So, we have to start over. And that's why it's a little bit like Groundhog Day. So, the purpose of today's meeting is to present to the commission a resolution scheduling, a public hearing, uh, on the bond issue and on the restructuring of the bond. Now, it's important to note, we look at packet of information that I provided to you. You'll see what I highlighted at the top. This would be the number one question, which I would expect the commission to have for me. And that is, um, that, you know, what is the liability of commission on these bonds? The answer is none. Uh, as you can see, that's one of the bonds, it's the largest of bond issues, it's a bond issue. It says bond, the last sentence of what I highlighted, this bond, the interest they're on, the charge, general credit, the taxing powers of Fayette County West Virginia. That language comes straight from the code section underneath the bond issue. So, I can, I have more topics of, and I'm happy to provide to anybody who'd like to see them, um. The bottom line is, the bonds were issued to assist the Boy Scouts. It allowed them to get a tax-exempt interest rate, which is a lower interest rate than what they would have gotten in a typical commercial finance. So, I'm happy to answer these questions. This is the process. So, just quickly, we'll have, there's a resolution presented today. Provided, the county commission, so, is, is willing, there will be, there'll be a, a public hearing scheduled, a future meeting, I mean, seventeenth. Will allow us to meet publication deadlines, and at that meeting, the public hearing will be held and the resolution presented, uh, authorizing restructuring of the bonds. Obviously, this is also attached to the county commissions, uh, uh, action, and you're all still on a discretion.
John, this started off at a hundred and seventy-five million. What's the outstanding balance right now?
Sure. Uh, actually, that's the twenty twelve bond. The total financing when it started was, um, two hundred and seventy-five million. That included the twenty ten bonds. I just didn't include that specimen, that, that, bonds are basically the same except for the amounts and dates. So, there's two hundred and seventy-five million outstanding, there's approximately one hundred and eighty-five million outstanding today.
And these were a thirty-year bond?
No, they were a ten-year bond originally. So, since the bankruptcy court, since bankruptcy actions has been going on, and that stays, any, any, any payments, et cetera, these bonds are actually, uh, at least the twenty ten bonds have matured. So, we'll be extending the term of the bonds another ten years in order for those to be amortized and paid off. And J P Morgan Bank is the holder of the bonds, and they will, they're agreeing to that extension.
So, what if they're not extended?
Uh, JP, well, the county commission would have no liability whatsoever. The, uh, B S A would, uh, be, you know, likely just to negotiate with Chase for a different, different terms.
Different rate?
It wouldn't be, yeah, it'd be a higher interest rate.
A higher rate. What do you think a higher rate would be? What are they getting now?
Um, it's indexed to, um, the prime rate, so it changes depending on when we actually close. My guess is the interest rate right now would be in the three percent range. This is a guess, okay, three, three and a half percent.
Prime is three percent right now?
No, 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 this is tax exempt, so it's a little.
Oh, okay, okay, low rate.
Yeah, so the higher rate would be five and a half, six, I'm guessing. And that isn't what the bed does between now and whenever we close.
Okay, so this, this is just a, to have a, uh, public hearing.
Right, right, on the seventeenth, that's right.
On the seventeenth, and the commission still will make a decision after the public hearing, whether to extend it or not.
Correct.
When it's decided, okay.
Okay, absolutely, correct.
Okay, I have one last question.
Sure.
Uh, roughly ninety million's been paid in twelve years. If it's gonna be extended ten years, how do they expect to pay off a hundred and eighty-five millions?
Uh, that's been negotiated with the bank, and they're, they haven't been committed to make any payments during the bankruptcy.
Oh, so that would have dropped it down even more.
Correct, yes sir.
All right, so.
Bankruptcy froze, now outstanding, or, or, or froze any payments.
So, they, okay, the three to six, depending on, so that's a three percent increase.
And I can get you, uh, you know, when I come back to the public hearing, I'm happy to provide you, you know, what would be interest rate different.
Yeah, I'd like that, and, and how, how, I have, I have looked at this.
Sure.
But how is the, is it, is the principal paid as they can pay it, or is it a schedule?
Um, it's a schedule, but they can prepay.
They can prepay?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not like it can, um, okay, so that's scheduled payment. Do you know the scheduled payment every month? Or is it yearly payment?
Um, I believe it's monthly. I don't have a depth of schedule of the interest rate, it hasn't been defined yet, because we're very.
I, i- there's a payment made every month, anywhere from three hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and Well, as the, as the principal, as the principal goes down, the payment goes down, I'm sure. Awesome, here, okay. Looked like it started about three hundred and twenty thousand and has grown as the years go. So, is it?
Now, this is the prior bond issue, so it's not.
Yes, thirteen.
Yeah, this is, it's prior bond issue, so, um, I can provide you with that information in prior.
I would, I would, uh, I would like all the financial information on this. And can you give an anticipated financial, uh, interest rates to?
Well, I can give you the interest rate as of, after that day, or close to it, I'm, uh, you know.
Okay.
Close as you've got, based on where we are.
Okay, all right. I, I, do any of the commissioners have any other questions?
Oh, I don't know.
Well, I don't have a problem, uh, making a motion to, uh, schedule a hearing, a public hearing to amend the Boy Scout narrative bonds.
There's actually, if you undo the binder, the, behind the bond issue, there's a resolution that does this, that, and just get a public hearing, it all does, and authorizes us the public, the note that's required. Now, in this instance, what the resolution says, the public hearing, you know, probably seventeen, twenty twenty-three at ten AM. We can, we can change that time if you, if you wish, in the daytime or subject to your authority.
Did I make a motion correctly, or?
Was it a motion?
You wanna make a motion?
Motion's with Dr. Revolution, yes.
Oh, okay, okay. I did this on revolution, okay.
Second.
All in favor? Just one signature or two? Yeah, you have to sign multiple spots. He'll hand you. Tom will probably want one of those too.
Right, yeah, I have a whole couple of copies here.
I'm sorry.
Yes, please, it's just a, a page of each one.
Yeah, there you go.
And that way.
He'll go over and see Michelle and have her sign it, and file it. It's very organized. So, are you stuck in, are you in West Virginia, or are you in Carolina, or where are you at? Okay, cool. From where?
That's just the code section, I mentioned earlier.
All right. But when will you have all that other information on that?
Um, we can have it to you in a week.
Okay.
First, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No, absolutely. Oh, okay. Well, I have additional.
Mr. Ingram? Wanna come out and give your spiel?
Uh, first of all, I wish I could, you've been at the time, and I know you're gonna make that time, so I'm gonna get ready for it. Uh, what I'm here for today, uh, a perfect tool, and I want to say this. In no way, shape, or form does the upper class, the big position council ever want to, uh, compete for water and sewer dollars, so. If it's competing for water and sewer dollars, tell me your home, council. But, uh, if you have dollars that are out there for trails for other, uh, type things, for that, if you're going to support, I'd like to put my request in that five month. And I know you know that a lot, if you did, uh, we will not compete for water. Uh, but my request is this, we, um, we were set on getting a one point seven million dollar grant for the River City Trail, it's good from Montgomery to, uh, Marina, uh, all the way up to the town connects to two towns. First, uh, the, uh, and, and I've been here before, over the same project, uh, and uh, with that, you know, what Kanawha County Commission, you know, and things like that, but we reached Kanawha County Commission. They gave us two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we went to, uh, both cities had put money in. Uh, Montgomery has about ninety thousand dollars in it, eighty to ninety thousand. Um, now, and we backed up fifty thousand from the city of Montgomery, twenty-five, thirty, city of Smithers. And then the Greater Kanawha Valley Foundation gave us thirty-seven thousand for a kayak launch and with concrete and stuff like that. So, there's a lot of people standing at the table, so I wanted to come back up to this commission and say, uh, well, the commission's story, so we needed sixty-one thousand dollars to pay region four for the, um, to do the work, to manage these funds. Um, so that's what our initial request to this commission was, sixty-one thousand to help it favor region four. Uh, since that time, Mayor Cavill here has received that sixty-one thousand from the governor's office, and it's been out in the air. So, that's fun. What I'm here for today is still to ask if there's funds out there, for trails or anything of that nature. Um, we could certainly use some of that. And again, I will never compete for water and sewer dollars. If you have other dollars, then consider us. If you don't, then so be it. Uh, we have to make whole on that request. And I know your question would be, what would you do with the money that you give me? We cut a lot of things out of that, uh, budget. Uh, for example, the trail will be traveled on blacktop, we like blacktop. Um, we took lights out that we could have put back in, we had a few more dollars. Uh, I think, uh, everybody has, has stepped forward, uh, and done their best, and if you all can, we would appreciate it. If you can't. And, and I think the formal request was sixty-one thousand. And, and I don't need the answer today, I just wanted.
No, we're not, we're not giving any answers. We got multiple.
I don't, yeah, yeah.
So, thank you for your time, I hope you catch up.
Thanks. Short and sweet.
Thank you very much.
Yep, yep. Thank you. You ready? I mean, I don't get any stuff.
It's the issue of Mr. Parsons being appointed this special duty here, commissioner, I can, it will depend uh, to let him know the commission's actions, Mr. Parsons, the body, he feels there must have been a misunderstanding as to his willingness to
I wondered about that.
Uh, assume this responsibility, we have to express to the commission.
Assume this responsibility, we have to express to the commission, he appreciates the vote of confidence. But he also asked me to express that with his current employment obligation, that he does not look at this situation time to devote. To this issue, and he would like to, to set aside.
Okay, I mean, we set it aside.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so.
Hold on, I need somebody besides Brian Parsons.
Yeah, Ms. Clerk, you need to find another attorney. I'm just wondering how you come up.
Comrades. Might be worth it, Chris Moorhead might do it. Comrades might do it. Just find somebody who doesn't have a conflict, or we might have to just go to Raleigh County. Maybe call Raleigh County's clerk and see if they use for the fiduciary commissioner, maybe we can just shoot it that way.
They're, they have, they're too loud.
Yeah, but we might just be able to ask another county's fiduciary commissioner to do it rather than somebody who's done it.
It may be best to do that. It may be best to do that.
I mean, Nicholas County might have somebody to, you know, who's doing its work. Probably.
Right.
About that.
Please state your name and what department you work for too.
Uh, I think, well, I work for the parks and garage, it's going to maintain, so. Uh, I just want to first state, thank you for taking your time, and then I am the first budget request. I know that you have quite a few others that will, uh, come after me, so if you be listening to my plea for work, then plenty. So I believe that Bay County Park has huge potential that has not been realized. It is one of Bay County's best kept secrets. I believe that the park would benefit greatly from a comprehensive strategic planning efforts to lay out a path for a successful future with measurable goals. We need to capitalize on the national and regional outdoor trends with better marketing and maintenance upgrades. Parks are directly related to increased property values, increased tax revenues, decreased medical costs through exercise, increased tourism res revenue. And improved track attractiveness to communities, businesses, and fires. There's a concentrated outdoor economic effort currently that is being spearheaded by West Virginia Tourism, WU, the NRT RDA. Raleigh Nicholas Canal Summers and many other Bay County municipalities. The Bay County Park should fall within those efforts. I think that this department should do a full county focus. I would love to work with Mayor Ingram and anyone else within Bay County that have recreation opportunities. But today I'm talking about Bay County Park. So since I have taken over as director October first, there have been many successful events, including October Land of Park and the major wonderland events. We have quite a few events planned for twenty twenty-three, both at the park and Memorial Building. Some of them included our, uh, movie nights, Good News Day County, DEP Water Days, Adventure Day County. Vinces in the Bill, Flea Markets, Withered Weekend, Youth Sports, both basketball and wrestling, Farmers Markets, Easter Hunts, Trout Derbies, Barbecue Events. As you can see, there's quite a few things planned for twenty twenty-three at dawn. I focused on organizational tasks of reviewing scheduling, time clocks, credit card services, and rental fees to try to bring in and tighten up through our revenue. I have conducted meetings with stakeholders, the park advisory board, trailing disc golf communities, with many other people, and health department that I can reach out to. We've researched new credit card companies, as the fees are currently very high, and I would like to work with county administrators to potentially find a new one for that. Um, we're working towards finding a solution to the pool issue, we put out a repair RFP, we ordered dye tracing. You know, pinpoint a leak, and now we are currently looking for a replacement with an RFP that will come before you in the coming weeks. We cleaned the park up, hired and launched a landfill within the four parts with state auction website. We tried to bring more recognition to the park through the West Virginia Price and Rep Conference, Detroit, West Virginia Trails Conference, Bay County Health Assessment, and other meetings. We've been successful in receiving a B active grant for removable pivot law courts at the memorial building. We're currently searching for funding, the Greater Canal Valley funding, um, first summer camp program, which I'll get to in a moment. Um, we have conducted through, uh, partnership with the Trail Coalition, one parade day, and over thirty people showed up first weekend of. January, we have four meetings and, um, trail work planned, and there's been quite a bit of community response to that. We have a disc golf tournament that is sponsored by a four H that is coming in two weekends at the park. There are seven week long camps that have been booked, there are eighty-three shelter days, thirty-three recreational, um, holidays booked with, that includes five weddings, and there's a waiting list for that. So, that being said, it's okay if you guys would like to dive into the actual budget requests and also let's start with the garage.
Yeah.
Um, do we have copies?
I'll go down here, I'll look, as soon as that spreads, you'll be one.
Yeah. You know, may I like to make notes on mine, so. Okay. Thank you.
Say, you want to lie?
Well, you'll probably need it.
Well, I have. Any. So. One note that I would like to make on the garage budget is previously, there were two staff members that were under the salary. In, not a patient, but then when it was actually put into the expenditures, that person's salary was going to the park. Why, her salary fully over to the park request, so right now, that salary just shows for our cannon. Is, um, first, per wood, and then a day, but I've been in pretty poor garage maintenance and supplies, because the cost of this is unfortunately going up. Since you guys don't have, in front of you, it may be harder to ask questions, but. That one is very similar to yours last. I don't know, we have some good questions to garage functions or judiciary.
My only persistent question about the garage has been whether, one, whether we're doing everything. We should down there, and two, whether there are things which would be, it'd be cheaper to contract out to do. And those two, those have been my concerns about what we do down there, especially given limited staff and.
Sure, so it's my understanding, just from talking to others, that there was some research done about outsourcing some of those services. And they found at that time that it is not cheaper, um, and also just the speed that things could be done, the efficiency. Because once we start outsourcing things, then we're competing to other, whether it's government contracts or just personal people's vehicles. Um, you know, right now, Junior and our staff is able to focus exactly on county vehicles, and that's it. Where if we go to see, I don't know, Tony, Mount Meereport, or anything like that, or major contracts, um, and we do go there for some work. That he's not able to do, um, we would not be able to get in this, and I know it definitely needs their cars.
They do, we, we could put an RFP out though and ask for bids for, and, and require a specific turnaround time, and that they fit us in within a certain amount of time, and that sort of thing is part of the contract.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's no hurt in asking, um, that's something, you know, I think it was done. Probably nineteen, perhaps is when I saw it, but we can revisit, uh, and see if anything was.
I did that in two thousand nineteen, and we went from buying quartz oil to barrels of oil. Um, and that saved us like ninety-four hundred dollars from the bids, people coming in to do an oil change. And we just checked that one thing, and that, tell a little bit about.
Well, I can, we can, just to be, it'll be good information to have, just.
Well, and, and including for anything that we're currently sending out in-house. You know, if we just had an agreement in place with somebody, so we can get our turnaround quicker on certain things.
Alright, so moving on to the park, that one is a little bit larger, um. I understand with our intentful healthcare expenses, so we not have the four reasons for anyone, um, I have. Monitor extra hours that will go into any of our extra additional staff members, we do not have lifeguards included in there. We will not be open, but we do need seasonal maintenance and things up to maintain the business department. Yeah, overtime is included, and just starting was clear, that is mostly in support of other county departments, such as plot for vehicles, saltine plumbing. And then revenue generating events, but that will be monitored closely as well. There's some savings in utilities for the pool, we will be, we'll water, electric, or staff. But those costs are increasing, so there's not as much you're out there as possible. Um, it's clear that you have an idea. A year that has a pool, just pool revenue, so party passes, punch cards, we're looking at, you know, an additional. Twenty to twenty-five thousand in revenue, and that's not include those fringe benefits of extra shelter concessions or just park attendees. And then the expenses for the pool, um, generally, we're seeing, you know, about fifteen thousand water, you know, in utilities, another. Ten, fifteen, ten staffing, so it is a big expense as well.
Okay, so.
So savings with no pool, I felt that it was about forty-one thousand dollars, just real concern.
Now, but we're gonna lose twenty-two to thirty-two thousand in revenue.
And that's just from pool passes, parties, and punch cards, that not for people renting shelters, because they want to take advantage of the pool, that's not additional concession in sales. And that's just doing a quick grants of park sales year to year with the expenditures.
Okay, so since we're, we know we're gonna have a loss there, what is, what has the park board come up with? As suggested ideas to increase revenue?
So if you'll allow me to go through at least this budget, then I have.
Okay, alright, sorry.
Very valid question, I knew it would be one of you'd ask, so I. So just looking at this spreadsheet, um, there will be, again, as I stated with the garage, that we increase the maintenance repairs and supplies. Uh, one, because costs are going up, but I also think that it is time that we invest in the park, if the commission wants to see it succeed. There are in years, it's overlooked repairs, they're grown into larger issues, the rainfall of the pool. Need to upkeep these facilities to keep them modern, as well as build the park more, and importantly, avoid future very popular affairs. So currently, the park advisory board does have a maintenance survey out to camp directors of the park, or maybe two other. Community members that rent shelters, so just to get a baseline of what users believe to be some maintenance issues. Um, I would like to potentially look at maybe adding the recreation hall is stored buildings, so that maybe we can receive the grant on that. You know, the junior girl has some experience there, so I'll be preaching that to her. Um, and then one thing to note, the Christmas lights, mission revenue has steadily increased, so I'd like to make some investments in there, and that is often under the supplies. So, once maintenance and investments are made, I believe that we need to communicate Bay County beyond the great asset that we have through a web page. So whether it's the new county website, or a specific recreation, or county park website, um, I think that that is something that will really like to invest in. So as John had asked, what are we thinking of putting money into, or bringing, to bring more money into the park? Um, the first thing I'd like to talk about is a partnership that, uh, unfortunately, Katie Johnson cannot be here to represent, but. I've worked closely with Katie Johnson, the Health Department, the Board of Education, and number of others about SOAR camp. So, summer outdoor arts and recreation camp. So this would be a top-notch camp experience for Bay County youth. They would attend Energy Express in the morning, and then Board of Education would bus them to the county park for the afternoon, the pilot program. We are searching and have requested for funding through the Greater Canal Valley funding. It reduces risk to these kids by potentially, you know, providing positive experiences and new opportunities for these kids. Goal is by supervised learning through playing sports, outdoor recreation, and arts through elementary age kids. The camp will also provide leadership opportunities for middle and high school kids, as well as college students. So looking to partner with WU Tech and their recreation department, um, MIT and their recreation department, Project Bay County, and some of the kids that they've had go through there. Um, in six weeks, it would be, as I stated, afternoon sessions in the park, the Board of Education, and the reach by transportation and food. Uh, each week will have a unique concentration of studies, and that was only the time of one for all the weeks. So you'll have opportunities to experience the park Monday through Thursday, and then Friday, we're partnering with some local outdoor companies, such as Ace, AOTG. Um, other, you know, to go rafting, climbing, um, survival skills, different things like that, so they can see all of Bay County. It is focused on valley and oak hills or new river, um, so it's going to touch kids off and on the plateau. But we're going to work with Board of Education to identify kids first, then we open up to everyone else. So we're trying to reach all corners of Bay County with this program. There will be a small fee to attend, but it will be solid opportunities. Um, we are asking the county to provide in-kind for salary supports, so payroll support, liability insurance. Um, and then some staff time of my administrative, um, skills and overseeing activities during that time. As well as funding for equipment that could then be rented out to other park visitors. So examples, bikes, helmets, you know, power boards, gimmicks, stoppings, so those are, that would be used by the kids, as well as we can charge rental fees to anyone else that.
Do you have that number?
That the cash outlay for equipment would be around eleven fifteen thousand, but the total value would be about forty thousand dollars. As well as venue rental, so then utilizing our. So beyond the summer camp, um, talking with the park advisory board, as well as the park staff. I would love to have a sit-down roundtable discussion with the county commissions to prioritize projects. But our list is one, swimming pool, which we will hopefully get some bids on soon. Uh, we would like to add a mini golf course, convert the tennis courts to pivot law courts. Increase our multi-use trails to invite the NICA, which is the West Virginia Mountain Bike League. You might lead in other events to the park. Add a septic system to the canteen, so we're able to serve food, ice cream, expand our offerings there, that plays into the mini golf and everything else that we want to bring in. Again, the rental equipment for visitors, we think would be an easy way to bring in a little bit of revenue. Stage for increased sponsors, additional Christmas pictures to really promote the Christmas season that we have, um, and so as well. Adding on to the rec hall, two seats used for weddings quite frequently, so adding potential bridal rooms, things like that, so we charge a little bit more. Um, shower house and cabin upgrades for camps, potentially turn the old course arena into a soccer field, so that we can host soccer camps. But the youth, as it's my understanding, that the rec league finds and struggles to find places to host camps and practices. Like potentially winterize some of the cabins. Like potentially winterize some of the cabins, so that we can become more of a twelve month of the year destination. Looking to bringing the county fair back. That's going to be an expense upfront, but potentially through ticket sales and add-ons, we could get a good ROI there. And some playground equipment. And then lastly, just provide consistent and improved signage, so that people know where we are and what we do. So in conclusion, before you guys ask two questions, I just want, you know, there's a few asks. One, I would like to work with the county administrator to approve a new credit card processor, so that we can reduce those costs. I would like to understand what kind of commitment you may be able to make for the store camp, because we are hoping to have that this year. And we got pending funding from the Ritter Canal Valley Foundation, and they're interested in knowing what other funding will be available. And I would like to, and for having a round table discussion with community members and the commission to prioritize projects, increase strategic plan, so that we can make any park and all of Bay County a true recreation destination.
What about the memorial building?
So the memorial building, just in the month of December, we brought in a thousand dollars in revenue through three craft fairs, the Grinch jubilation event. January, we had a very successful wrestling tournament that brought in people from all over the state, if not out of the state. It was amazing how many people were there, just from photos, I did not personally. But looking forward, we have the youth basketball that takes January and February, and they're there six days of the week. This past weekend, I went to the Manhattan exhibit, which had thirty to forty people. So we're really bringing more people into the memorial building. And we have a movie night planned for March, month of March. There is a vintage in the bill, that's already booked. There's been some pre create concerts, so we're trying to balance it between community events and for profit events. Trying to get more and more people in and out of that building, so I realize that there's extreme overhead on that. And we are looking to try to bring in some time.
Well, a lot of people don't realize, and I didn't realize how bad it was until I asked Ruth a couple of weeks ago. But the park and memorial building combined are running at about almost a million dollar a year deficit. I mean, it's about eight hundred and seven thousand dollars a year. So we really do need to figure out how to bring revenue in even more, you know, the the events are going to benefit the community because the revenue will benefit the community. So, you know, I would like the park board and you, and I know we have interested citizens who would like to get involved. And to try to come up with some ideas about how we might make the memorial building profitable. Because the way we do it now, it is far from profitable. It's an old building, as you know, when you used to have to write the grants to get it fixed. It's expensive to maintain and repair and it just, it needs a new plan. It needs a new plan. And I would love to hear the, have the town of Fayetteville, Tannis, Stover, somebody involved in you know, whatever the idea generation is, because she's been very active, I know, here in the town getting things going.
Yeah, I will reach out to her and invite her to any meetings, pass the next part advisory.
We talked about the climbing wall for the memorial building.
Yep, so that costs about sixty thousand dollars. And that is the sort of mobile, just see like the National Guard has one, they take to county fairs and things like that. It would be difficult to disassemble and reassemble, but it is an option. And storing that, given that we have other events like basketball, we think were better, colleges.
Well, since the bleachers don't work on the floor, we could jerk out a couple or three rows of those. Put a permanent climbing wall in, so that we have climbing events. And these climbers can get exercise through the winter. I mean, Jean, would you like?
Yeah, they were paid more for training thing, and we're happy for that was put together properly. I mean, there's a lot of, everybody in the industry that makes artificial climbing walls, now they know about Fayetteville. There's this mobile project that's going on in the town of Fayetteville. Yeah, I'm not sure, you know, that's more of an exterior structure, but you're talking about, here's the drive building, we're just trying to put.
And then something I think that we could cash in on now is we have the ponds. So if we add fish to it and make it a pay pond, so as people catch fish, they pay for the fish that they take home with them. And we make a few bucks on it.
That will help. We have a very special craft derby event where we do stock the pond. So if you wanted to stop on the pond on a more regular basis.
Need to look at simulated golf. It's really turning big, you can turn it out into a small part of the park. And then, you know, and talking with several girls that like to play softball. There is not a softball batting cage anywhere. And these folks will go in and they pay two to five dollars to hit balls. So if we had a softball batting cage, that could bring a lot of people in. So just a few things, oh, and food truck show?
So almost all of our events have trucks already, and we've got one planned that is focused on a park view for the month of July, October. Fayetteville, like doing one, it's in Fayetteville, that becomes a bit of a curbing logistic. But it is something that we've been exploring. As well as adding the farmer's bucket indoors at the memorial building.
And yes, Christmas has done well. I've gone for the last twelve years and it just keeps getting bigger.
Yep, and there's quite a few throughout the state, so getting on that, you know, Christmas like trail. But also being able to offer something new every year, I think we need to be able to draw them in with something for the forward.
We all good?
You know, you're usually the one that I look at and say.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, I. Ms. Taylor?
I, just a comment, because I was, I was adding up the numbers and it looks like you're asking about double the budget. For each.
Last year was budgeted, what, more?
Oh, I see, I was looking at expended versus, never mind, I was looking at the wrong column there. I guess for most things, I'd just like to see, because you have a limited staff and the park board, you know, is volunteer board. That we have a plan and priority set. And I'm glad you said the pool is your first priority, but still would like that cost benefit analysis I requested on whether the pool is making the kind of money that should be made to have it there.
Well, and that's, so that, I guess that's where I was going with just the pool revenues versus the expenses. It does make more sense to have a pool, is it, you know, a huge outweigh? Hard to tell because of the shelter reservations that were related to the pool and some of the concessions. So we have had a non-cool year, two years, twenty twenty and twenty twenty two. But some of those people were anticipating there being a pool. So this year will be the first year that we truly see, everyone knows, going into the fair is no pool. As of right now, we've been able to retain all the summer camps, even though there isn't a pool. But we will see, you know, whether that is something that we are interested in or not. I know just from a community support standpoint, and of course you always hear eat whales, you guys can understand that way more than anyone. There is a lot of community disappointment in not having a pool. I think having the ability to do swimming lessons in an area that is surrounded by so much water, especially it's passive water is a huge value to the community and it's something that I would like to look into. And that's something that maybe doesn't have a dollar sign attached to it, but just those programs. We know their swim team, I've talked with Angela, she has a lot of knowledge in that, but being able to bring swim meets. And that's, you know, revenue that we haven't realized, we haven't tried it. And also, you know, when we get into the RFP, we will replacement, look at potential for adding a bubble over it. And being able to do full months out of year, we had a pool in this area that was open year round, and it's very, very successful. And then we can open to other things after the park.
We might be able to, in the meantime, work with a local business that has a pool, like the Holiday Lodge or or Hoxton State Park, or, you know, to do swimming lessons. And I agree with that, the importance of that. I grew up on this. And it's not only, you know, something teaching kids how to swim, but it's giving a place for them to gather and play, you know, while their parents are at work and.
Sure, that's all that comes from all that. I do know, I believe it was the Holiday Lodge that worked with some of the local kayak, or to roll clinics and safety, by our safety unions like that. So that's something that maybe you would have been, so you don't have to lie.
Spent most of my time down there swimming, yeah, that's where I was, yeah. When's the next trail day? What time?
Ten AM to two PM. And I believe there was first plan to Bay County Park, and I did hear the comment, you know, why don't we come here more? And then February nineteenth is the disposal.
Can you get us a copy of when these proposed dates are? Send them to Ruth and then she can get them out to us.
And trails are, for that trail plan that you're prioritizing Bay County Park. Or that soft surface trail plan that come before you guys, you did put a financial commitment to, so we thank you for that as well.
Any other questions? Everybody good? Alright, thank you. Alright, I guess Wes is taking this next, right? Hey Ruth, Wes, okay, you heard me. Talk behind my back. I get that all the time, talking behind my back.
Well, hey, I found a petition we have to share that players, Jack Yard writes. One previous comment, boy, I've never done this before, so I the basis board is also unique. As the commission knows, the law is clear. The sheriff is a appointment as last resort when it comes to guarding conservators. And the code is clear that after forty five days, anyone can petition to have him appointed, he represents. And there's actually a good case law that says, he has to, if it's a, if it's a losing, if we lose money, if he loses money. We have to nevertheless, because that's what built on statute. And we do, and that's why the sheriff has a program that is supported by the prosecutor's office that if in a state has assets and stuff, we try to get our statute for a metaphor to make, make up for the indigenous cases, so we can otherwise operate the program. Interesting point in this, and I said interesting probably for me and Allison and people who are crazy enough to reflect the law is, there's actually no assets in the state. And so if there are no assets to the estate, the law said that a guardian or a conservative should not be appointed. And that's what we run into here, but in this case, add one, an additional element that I put in the petition. That concerns me about if we would permit this process to be laid out. Because in this instance, a attorney for a injured person filed suit. The, the person died while the case was pending, his spouse did not seek appointment. He then petitioned the sheriff to be appointed. There's no assets to the estate, and the petition goes through all the avenues that we tried to get at to identify assets. And then he serves complaint on the sheriff. And requires, we have judiciary duty, we are conservator of this, and we have to assert every defense that is its property to protect the assets of the estate and the features thereof. So it actually creates this scenario where the sheriff has to retain counsel on taxpayer expense to defend the tort action. And neither the sheriff nor any county officer is in the case. In fact, all interested persons, the surviving spouse and the litigants are the other interested persons. So that's a long-winded way of saying, unless the commission has any questions with a petition, the petition sets out clear that upon the appointment of the sheriff, we underwent all diligent efforts to identify assets, there was no assets that did not automatically transfer upon right of ownership to the surviving spouse. And as such, we ask the commission to declare the appointment void. And that they need to sue the proper people, they need to sell this out amongst themselves. And one last kind of tidbit. This cannot be cloud attacked by any other court, which is one of my parents for you. Judge Klay doesn't have the authority to declare this point for the Supreme. The county court, now county commission, has to be the ones to assess this. And on any type of allegation that this appointment is voidable, and that's not a key. It's not automatically void, the law considers it voidable, which is why I have to present the facts to say, hey, please avoid this. So that's probably more than you gotta wanna know, would have got any questions, that county needs its case, file petition to clarify.
It makes sense to me, I move that we.
She's a lawyer.
I move that we declare the appointment of Jackie Les R. Bright void.
Second, all in favor? Thank you, Wes.
I did find it interesting.
We got one more on your list, Ruth?
Yep, that's the one where Don had to move.
No problem.
Oh, that's hilarious. So the last thing is to name the NRG RDA. Have a certified development community.
Can we please have Tom say that?
Well, he's got a cheat sheet that I made him up.
NRG RDA.
The one that he leaves out.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve NRG RDA.
What is it, the certified development community partner?
Absolutely, that's my motion.
And I, according to the order, we're about to sign second it.